Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us on the media briefing for this Wednesday. We have a lot of great topics to cover today, so we'll get started. Last week, we brought you some information about the FEMA Funeral Assistance Program, and we have some updated information today. And we're very pleased to be joined by Justin Lin, who is an emergency planner with our Office of Emergency Services, and Supervisor Luisa Lejo, who has been really a great champion for this program in Monterey County. Thank you both for joining us today. Supervisor, Justin can give us the update, but Supervisor, I know your time is limited. Can you tell us more about the importance of this program for our community and the people who've lost loved ones?
Thank you very much, Maia. And I know Justin Lin did a great presentation to the Board of Supervisors this week with a lot more details, I think, for our press and our community to look at. But this is a timely topic, as FEMA just announced this week that, starting on Monday, hotline will open to start taking applications to provide funeral and burial assistance to families. And we know that, as of today, over 556,000 Americans have lost their lives to COVID, including 342 here in Monterey County. So at a time where families have really endured so much, losing their loved ones, grieving, and a profound loss, on top of that, these families have found themselves really in an emergency financial situation, trying to scramble to put money together to pay for those burial and funeral expenses for their loved ones. And so we had done a referral. We were one of the earliest counties, along with Los Angeles County, to start looking at this and investigating even before FEMA came out with these guidelines and these requirements and this announcement. We were looking at how we could help our local families with this. And there is still a need for us to look at perhaps a local program in addition to the FEMA program, because we think that there is going to be some gaps, some residents that will not qualify for FEMA, and perhaps some expenses that may not be covered either. And so we're looking into those, and we're trying to get some more clarity on what is fully covered under FEMA and what incidents are covered, as well as previous legislation had said it was for funeral expenses of 2020, but it was for those that take place this year. So we're looking forward to that coming back to the board. We don't have a meeting next Tuesday, but we will have one the following week. And we hope that Justin and our OES team could come back and bring some options for us to see how we could support the FEMA program being fully implemented and encouraging our local residents to apply, for that, the family members to apply. And then, secondly, being able to create a local program that could assist families as well for those that don't qualify for the FEMA program. But this is going to be retroactive. It's going back to any funeral expenses that may have taken place as of January 20, 2020. So this will be significant for families to get reimbursed that funding up to $9,000 per funeral. And hopefully, this isn't true, but if there's multiple funeral expenses within one family, I think they're eligible up to a maximum of $35,000. But I'll pass it off to Justin, who has a lot more details about the program. But it will be important to get this information out to our residents and encourage those who are eligible to apply to get that reimbursement from these federal dollars.
Thank you, Supervisor. And Justin, tell us more. I know you did have a great presentation, and that's why you're here.
Thank you both. Yeah, so it's definitely been like an office, an office collaboration with lots of support. I'm putting in the chat two important links. One is, it's the same link, but one is English, one in Spanish. And the FEMA website is really the best resource. People are welcome to come to our website. We're going to redirect you, because they're going to have a toll-free operator line that's going to be up and running. The program starts April 12. The operation hours are Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Pacific Time. There's no registration deadline as of yet. It hasn't been clarified. And we expect that the coverage is going to go beyond the December 31, 2020 initial deadline for just people who've passed away. But we'd need additional information from FEMA. And like I've mentioned, please direct people to the FEMA website. And people are welcome to reach out to our email, info.oes@co.monterey.ca.us, of course. And 211 is also set up to direct people for services in the county. And that's the 10,000 mile high overview. On the FEMA website, you can also see what is currently being covered under the FAQ, the Frequently Asked Questions section.
And I was going to ask you about that. A lot seems to be changing right now. Should people go to the FEMA website for really the latest information?
Yeah, absolutely. So even if they change it, that's the best place to get started. So as people are trying to collect the documents they need, look at eligibility, this is where they'll go, and they can see, oh, I'm going to need this. If they feel like, you know, they just keep getting a busy number once the, or a busy, a busy sound from FEMA, once the toll-free number is set up and taking applicants, don't worry. The program is going to be very busy at the start, but they're going to be able to process most people. So keep that in mind.
All right. Thank you both, and I'm mindful of your time, so we're, yes, go ahead.
But I did just want to add, though, because as people look at the website, the requirements are there. If, for the person who's deceased, there's no requirement that they, that they have been a citizen or lawful permanent resident, or somebody with legal status. That, that isn't, for deceased person, that is not an issue. But for the family members that are asking for reimbursement, they do have to be a citizen, lawful permanent resident, or have some sort of legal status. And that is where the gaps that we're talking about, that a local program could perhaps provide reimbursement for, or help pay for some of the expenses if they are undocumented. And the other question that we're not clear on, the FEMA program says it covers transportation, because sometimes, for example, if somebody is deceased in one state and they want to move them locally to be buried, that, that seems to be covered under transportation of that. But we're not also clear whether it would cover, for example, a local resident who died of COVID in Monterey County, if they wanted to be buried back, for example, in Mexico, whether the FEMA program would reimburse for those costs. So those were the, some of the issues that we're hoping to get greater clarity on for our residents.
Thank you both very much. And I'll try to get to you guys with questions before. I know Supervisor, you have to step off the call a little early. We'll try to get some questions to you shortly after a couple of our presenters. And our next subject is some South County vaccination clinics. You have seen these on social media. There are clinics in Greenfield and Soledad this week. And there's a great story behind them about how they came together and the partnership that was created. And I'm very pleased to be joined by Irene de Barracua and Rosemary Soto from our CAO's office to talk about how these clinics came together. Hello, ladies.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Irene, can you tell us how these two clinics came together? And how many people you'll be assisting this week?
Yes, so these, these clinics have come together thanks to the collaboration with the state, with the Governor's Office, actually, and with our work as part of the collaborative in the VIDA, VIDA Project. And so the need for a community-based clinic by the community for the community is specifically focused for farm workers in South County. This is going to, this is being conducted by on-the-ground outreach, education out in the fields for those that may have a little more hesitancy, right, regarding the vaccine, and being able to streamline them straight to the vaccination event with trusted messengers. And so we're very excited about it, and it's very successful so far.
And Rosemary, can you tell us what the role VIDA played in this, these clinics?
Yeah, so the VIDA Project basically has established a connection, a relationship with the External Affairs Office for Governor Newsom. And we actually are also working to, to plan for perhaps future, future events of, you know, mass vaccination clinics such as these. We know that it is a great approach. One of our local community-based clinics here has, has done a great job over the last several weeks in conducting these mass vaccination clinics. And we also wanted to be looking at where are other sites, other cities, other communities that are also highly impacted and has not seen a big push for vaccine clinics located in there, in those communities such as these. So that's, that's, that was part of the thought of going to Soledad and Greenfield. And we know there are other communities in Monterey County that we want to be able to focus on. It all is going to come down to the availability of more vaccines that will determine how, if we can do this again, and how often we can in the, in the near future. But I think this is, this is a great partnership that we want to continue to build upon. We're very grateful that the Governor's Office has, has designated this, this sort of outreach to community partners and, and the VIDA Project specifically. Yes.
Irene, can you tell us how many people you'll be able to vaccinate this week? As I, the great thing about the vaccine coming for this program, it's in addition to our county allocation.
Yes, it is in addition. And so this is a total of 3,000 Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. And also, the beauty of it was being able to get this feedback from the community as to how they felt about the vaccines as well, and then being able to sort of make decisions based upon that. And, and the popular choice or opinion was, it was the more, the better. And so we did go for the 3,000 Johnson &amp; Johnson, one dose. And, and so, yeah, these are going to be sort of, I guess, separated by five, five clinics? Wait, Monday, Saturday, Sunday, or four clinics, I'm sorry. Actually, six. Two in Greenfield and four in Soledad. And so that's how we're separating the, the 3,000 doses.
Can you tell us the locations? Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Rosemary, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that even though the outreach is focused on the farmworker community, it is open to everyone who is eligible at this point. And so that, that's another plus, I think, to this partnership, is that we don't have to be restrictive in terms of who the population of focus is. And, yeah, that's it.
Can you tell us the location of the clinics, these, all these clinics?
Yes, it's in Greenfield. It's at the Memorial Hall. And the Soledad is at the old YMCA, the Community Center.
And the hours for the clinics?
10 to 7:00 p.m. And, and yes, this, these appointments, so we're doing the registration ourselves. And so you're able to actually call both. This is also in collaboration with the UFW and UFW Foundation. And so by calling Adriana from Lideres Campesinas, or the number they're provided with the UFW Foundation, you can actually register for an appointment. But also, we do accept walk-ins. We're just organizing it, of course, by appointments, and so.
And I'll, for, for those who are interested, I can, I'll get the numbers and put them, I'll send them out or put them in the chat at, at some point, either during or after the briefing. Thank you both, ladies, very much for sharing this great information. And if you could stay on the call for some questions, that would be great.
Thank you, Maia.
All right. And our next subject is a little off, only slightly off the subject of COVID, but it's a great thing to, activity to do while you're having to be virtual everything, which is the Recovery Run 2021. And we've got two people here to talk about this run. It's an event that brings attention to the problem of addiction in our community and highlighting successes. And I'd like to introduce Bree Lewis, who is with the Bridge Restoration Ministry Residential Treatment Program, and Dr. Casey Grover with Montage Health, to tell us more about the Recovery Run.
Thank you so much. So my name is Casey Grover. I'm an emergency physician in Monterey, California. And today, I'm actually presenting with Bree on behalf of the Bridge Restoration Ministry. I will briefly highlight why we're doing what we're doing, and then I will defer to brief the logistics. So unfortunately, the opiate epidemic has not gone away despite COVID. And in fact, it's actually gotten worse. I was just on a federal webinar before this, and I learned that between August 2019 and August 2020, we had 88,000 Americans die from drug overdose. And 40 states in America had more overdose deaths in that time period than ever before. And this really highlights the fact that unfortunately, COVID has only made getting treatment for addiction even more challenging. And the reason why we, we focus on this is addiction is a treatable illness. And unfortunately, we treat it as though it is not. And I'll give some brief statistics. One in seven Americans is estimated to have a substance use disorder at some point in their lives. Applying those numbers to Monterey County of 435,000 people, that's as many as 62,142 people in Monterey County that may have a problem with drugs or alcohol. And unfortunately, only about one in 10 Americans has access to treatment for drug or alcohol addiction, which means that of those 62,000 Monterey residents, only about 6,000 have access to treatment. And addiction is an illness that is treatable, and the devastation is unbelievable. I worked in the emergency department last night till 2:00 a.m., and I unfortunately saw multiple patients suffering from drug and alcohol addiction. Recovery, in my mind, is the process of getting treatment and getting to recover the life that you lost to addiction. And one thing I'd like to highlight before I turn it over to Bree is that if we think about our children, no one in their third grade class asks to be a drug or alcohol addict when they grow up. They want to be firefighters, nurses, doctors, public health workers, county supervisors. And yet, unfortunately, through the circumstances of life made even more challenging by COVID, people end up going down the path of using drugs or alcohol. And we are excited to promote an event that celebrates treatment, promotes treatment, and remembers those who we've lost. And I'll turn it over to Bree from here.
Yeah, thanks so much, Casey. So like Casey said, that this Recovery Run, it's, it's an annual event. And so this is the second annual. It's hosted by different recovery organizations every year. And this year, our organization, the Bridge Restoration Ministry, is the host. And we're really excited about it. You know, this year, we're having to do the event virtually. And so what that means is I've placed a registration link, or the link to our webpage for it, in the chat. And that people are going to be going online to register for this run, and then doing the run at their own convenience, anytime between now and the end of the month. And beyond that, on May 1st, we're going to have a Race Day celebration with drive-through options as well for people to come and get their medals, their t-shirts, their goodie bags. And, and just to really celebrate the fact that there are people absolutely advocating on behalf of recovery, and that there are a lot of resources available in this community. And however, because we can't gather in hundreds to rally for this cause that we're all very passionate about, we still, one of the goals of this event is not just to raise funds, but to raise awareness in our community of the severe impact that it's had on our community. And so the way we're doing that this year, with it being a virtual event, is we're doing an Impact of Addiction flag display. And so we've got three different flags. We have black flags to honor and remember the lives of those who've been lost to addiction, and white flags to celebrate those that are in any stage of recovery, and then red flags to honor and celebrate the friends and family that have supported someone with an addiction fighting for their recovery. Our goal is to have over 1,000 flags at this Impact of Addiction flag display. We're inviting the media to come and see this flag display, which will be displayed on May 1st at Calvary Monterey, and then will be displayed on May 2nd at Jewel Park in Pacific Grove. And we have had flags out to many of the recovery organizations in this area. And we also have just partnered with the Monterey County Jail. They're going to be taking in the fabric portion of our flags and having some of the inmates actually personalize these flags, putting on their names, significant dates, number of days sober, and just, just acknowledging that this, this, this cause is a big deal in our community. And sometimes, we think that it isn't. And so we're excited to have this flag display to help show the impact. And what we're asking people in the community to do is just to support the cause by going to that link that I put here. You're welcome to share that, to get people to register for the event. When they register, there's also an option to buy a raffle ticket to be entered to win a Lexus LS300. And so that's very exciting. You can be entered to win a vehicle. And then, if you're interested in participating in the flag display, and you can go and pick up flags at the Second Chance Thrift Store, which is located in Pacific Grove. And you can get a flag there, personalize it, and then hand it back to be added to be a part of this larger flag display that we're going to have showcased on May 1st and 2nd.
And I just may make one more comment. I obviously care enormously about this population of people. And to attest to the stigma that we have against people with addiction, I have to apologize to the group. I use the term addict. And I'm trying to change my lexicon, so it's a person with addiction. They are people first. So I wanted to apologize as I used an incorrect word there.
Thank you both very much for sharing this information. It seems like a really positive way to address something that, that the issue, for some, may be overwhelming. They're not sure quite what, how to support this, people who are working in this field and, and how to help people. This seems to be a very positive way that people can show their support.
Absolutely, yeah. We really encourage you, whether you come for the Race Day Celebration or not, if you just gather some of your folks and do a 5K walk with your family, grab your coworkers or your neighbors, and when you do that walk socially distanced, or you plan a time to just do it together, really in honor of somebody. And we're also encouraging people to post their pictures when they do their run or their videos, and to hashtag that with hashtag #RecoveryRun2021, and just to be a part of this event that we're all trying to come together, both to bring about awareness and to celebrate those that are fighting and battling in recovery well.
Thank you both very much. And hopefully, at least one of you can stay on for questions as we wrap up all of our, our presentations today. Our next topic is a little bit of a preview. Our Board of Supervisors has a special meeting today beginning at 1:30. And among the topics is going to be a homelessness workshop. And Lauren Suansupa from our Department of Social Services is, has joined us to give us a little bit of a preview of what we'll be hearing about this afternoon at this board meeting. Hi, Lauren.
Hi, Maia. Thank you so much. And I do want to just stress, you know, while I'm here as from the Department of Social Services to share about this topic and, you know, invite the public and, you know, my, my county, other departments, colleagues to join since a special meeting on Wednesday. Not necessarily everybody recalls coming to meetings on Wednesdays, normally on Tuesdays. So please, join us in this conversation. Homelessness is such a deep and multifaceted issue. Social services is not the, the only coordinator to this. You know, we really need this collaborative effort to talk about all of the different facets that cause homelessness, that how homelessness looks different in so many places. The presentation today really is the, just the start of a study session to look at, you know, what does homelessness really look like in our community? The, looking at how it's organized throughout the county and how different aspects of the, the side effects of homelessness are addressed and handled. It is going to be a, quite a collaboration. In, in addition to social services, we also have partners from the Health Department, including behavioral health, housing and community development, and also our, our community partners, the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers, and even our Supervisor Luisa Lejo in representation of the Continuing Overcare Leadership Council as part of our presentation. So it's really a collaboration in addition with the Office of Education and how homelessness affects children in trying to attend schools, how, how law enforcement is involved and how they engage with this population. We're going to look at the definitions of homelessness and what, what homelessness is defined as in various aspects of government lens, in a school lens, and what that looks like in your community. What are the current strategies that the county is working on in collaboration with our community and our cities? Ways that people can, can get involved, activities that either county departments or our county, uh, community partners are working on, and ways that we can get involved. We're also going to talk a bit about a refresh to the tenure plan in homelessness that the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers is working on, and really trying to set that stage to find out a little bit more about how to identify our barriers and really ending homelessness. Really, this is just a high level. Any one of the topics that are going to be addressed today on one of the, any of these slides really could be a presentation in and of itself. So keeping in mind, this really is very high level, but we are hoping to allow this to be a place to springboard and invite deeper conversations and more exploration into how to address this, this issue in our community.
Thank you very much, Lauren, for giving us that preview. And for people who want to join in this and monitor this and watch this this afternoon, I know the board meeting begins at 1:30, and there's a COVID presentation first at 1:30. Are you the next item after?
Actually, the third item, number three. So there'll be something in between the COVID presentation with the, the third item of the day.
All right. Thank you very much. And hopefully, you can stay on a few more minutes for any questions that people might have. And now we're going on to some other good news this week for people who are looking for employment assistance. They got some very good news. At the One Stop Center has reopened for, partially reopened for in-person service. And Laura Kirchner from the Workforce Development Board is here to tell us more about the reopening of the One Stop Center. Hi, Laura.
Hi, Maia. How are you?
I'm good, and you?
Doing well, doing well. Thank you so much for having us today. Appreciate it. We are open. Yay! That's the good news. We have moved in the last year to 344 Salinas Street in downtown Salinas. For those that know the area, that's just across from Casa Sorento in the downtown area. So it's America's Job Center, also known as the One Stop Career Center. So we are taking people back in by appointment and are inviting folks to call us at 796-333-5, or to email, and that's montereyemploymenthelp@equusworks.com. And I'll be sure and put that in the chat for folks. We can take up to about 10 people at a time in the facility. We're so happy to be open again. It was kind of a long haul for us. We were continuing this whole time doing things virtually over the phone. And, but it's going to be nice to be able to see people in person again.
So for people who are coming into the new center, what are things that they can do? And I know you provided a lot of virtual services over the last year, but what can people do when they come into the center? Tell us what it will look like.
You know what? I've got a PowerPoint presentation here. Happy to share my screen if you're so inclined.
Please do.
Okay. Let me see if I can do that. Okay. Okay, so again, we're located now, folks, at 344 Salinas Street in downtown Salinas, in the L-shaped building across from Casa Sorento. We have both our Monterey County Workforce Development Board, as well as America's Job Center, also known as the One Stop Career Center. And we're all under one roof here in this, in this facility. Invite people to come down. We do want you to call first, though, to make an appointment. And here's another look at that, the facility. They can come in. They can use the, the Job Center. You can sit with some career counselors to find out, to get your, your, your job back on track. They're right there. Is, is our front lobby just a beautiful new facility? Those are, those are what I call the steps to your future. You'll meet these lovely ladies upstairs, who are going to get you registered into our, into the CalJob System, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act system, so that we can provide some services to you. You'll have the chance to use our, our Career Center right here to get online and registered for career services, to sign up for classes in how to build your resume, how to interview, how to network, the kinds of things that employers are looking for. We want to encourage everybody that wants to do this to call in advance, again, 796-333-5, 796-333-5, or you can email us at montereyemploymenthelp@equusworks.com. Sometimes you just need a little bit of help when you're, when you're looking for work, and that's what we're prepared to do. We have skilled and trained job counselors and talent coaches who are there to provide you with the support that you need to get those good jobs. And I want to assure you, folks, there's lots of good jobs out there right now. I'll also put our Workforce Development Board website in the chat so that you can log on and look at the job board, because I got to tell you, there are tons of employers that are looking for people. And it's across the board in many different industries. Our agricultural industry is especially looking for folks, but, but hospitality is also opening up. So I would encourage you to, to log on and take a peek. Again, please call us in advance if you want to come down and, and use the Job Center. They've, there's, again, a resource room with phones and computers. There's EDD has phones available right here for you. If you need to get ahold of EDD and you need to speak with someone on the phone, we are socially distancing in order to, to adhere to, to standards. And here's one of our brand-new classrooms. It's just a beautiful facility. So we want to encourage our community to definitely take advantage of it. There's also resume writing tools and assistance, a job search assistance, career counseling and exploration assistance, individualized employment plan development, job training services. job training services, employment workshops, labor market and employer information, job fairs and hiring events with employers, supportive services that include SNAP, financial assistance, Medicaid, training services, childcare, emergency funds and other benefits, referrals to community resources, other agencies, and access to our Career One Stop Worker Reemployment Website for laid-off workers, access to California Job Bank or California, or excuse me, Career One Stop National Job Finder. So we are your one-stop shopping center, one-stop center, and we are just delighted to be reopened and and available to to serve our community.
Thank you very much, Laura. It looks, looks great in there, all shiny and new.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We're, we're here to provide this service, and we're happy to do it.
Thank you. And if you could stay on the line if if there are any questions that people might have, that would be great. We have our last presenter now for for this Wednesday. Our friend Karen Smith from the Monterey County Health Department. This is a Public Health Week. And while most of us have been feeling very close to public health over the last year, this is a time to really acknowledge and celebrate the work that goes on behind the scenes for those involved in public health. And Karen is going to share more about it with us.
Hello. Hello. As Maya said, it, this year has been a year that that shows how important public health is. We do celebrate this every year, talking about public health. It's more than bicycle helmets and vaccines. We are the, we're there here to improve the community. So this is, this year's theme is building bridges to a better health. So, and if I can find one of the the theme pictures that I had all lined up for you. Every day has a theme, and this year, we were to celebrate, we we kicked it off with the press conference with Congressman Pineda. That day's theme just happened to be rebuilding, and that was an announcement of a, a very nice grant to our, our, our clinics. And then the second day's theme was racial equity and moving towards it. And that also happens to be the day that our, both our director and my boss, Krista Hani, went before the board and talked about, and I believe Rosemary Soto, went to the board declaring racism a public health emergency. So that's, and today is Wednesday, today's, today's theme, I'm drawing a complete blank, of course. But so that's what we're, we're just celebrating that. It's really tough because all of us are so busy. But I want you to know that there's, you know, we're doing more than just COVID. There are still things that are going on behind the scenes, such as our environmental health, our behavioral health, public health, tobacco is still going, our tobacco program, our cannabis program. All of our programs are still having to go on underneath to keep the community healthy. So we'd encourage people to take a look at the APHA.org site, which is the American Public Health Association. And it will talk about, you know, what's happening with National Public Health Week. Follow us on social media, and you'll learn something new every day. And I want to just raise a glass of clean, clear, refreshing water to all of my colleagues in public health and thank them for their hard work, not just during COVID, but every day that all of us have come to, that that they all come to work, whether you work in communicable disease or environmental health or substance abuse. I just, I want to raise and thank them for all of their hard work. It's good to know that really everywhere you look, public health touches your life. So whether it's traffic safety, tobacco programs, children's programs, clinics, vaccinations, some of the things are a little more behind the scenes, such as water quality. But we're everywhere you are. And I just, again, want to thank all my colleagues, and I'm excited to tell more people about public health.
And your boss put the theme of the day in chat, which is strengthening community. And of course, that is something that public health is very heavily involved in, in strengthening our communities. Thanks very much, Karen. And that wraps up our presentations right now. There have been, there's been a lot of activity in the chat. There are a lot of links to some of the programs, to the One Stop, to the Recovery Run. There is a question regarding the vaccine, vaccination clinics. And I don't have anyone on the call right now that can answer this question, but I will forward your question about whether there will be max vaccination clinics with no appointments. And another question about efforts to vaccinate homebound residents. So I will, I will forward those and try to get a response for you. Are there any other questions for any of our presenters today on on any of the topics? I'm seeing nothing and hearing nothing. That must mean our presenters are very thorough. Oh, and I see Karen has just put up her slide. Karen?
Yes, I'm just sharing my slide.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm just sharing my slide about, that, that's today's slide. And this will be, you'll see this on social media, and all of our slides contain something about science, something about what we, action, what we can do, and then something for health that that shows how it directly affects the health of our community.
All right, thank you, very nice. And so with no other questions, I want to thank everyone who joined me on the briefing today. This was just a wonderful series of information for our community to find out more about activities and information. Our next media briefing will be next Wednesday, and we'll see you then. Thanks, everyone.